Please for me and the flag.
To the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands. One nation in America indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comment, Lori? Moving on, do we have any changes to the event that's been made? During that, we will carry on. And next we have the Clackamas T S D Local Service Plan Presentation presented by Mr. Larry Goodway.
Right.
Welcome.
Well, thank you. Yeah, it's good to be here with you this evening. Thanks for having us here. As she said, I'm Superintendent Larry Goodway for Clackamas T S D and with me here is our Vice Chair, who you may recognize, he actually went to school here in rural down. It's been a while. So, so, so John Eyman is our Vice Chair from Clackamas T S D, a long serving board member. And this is our annual visit with you to share with you our plan for the coming school year. And our local service plan, of course, is designed to serve all ten of the school districts in the county. And we're excited to share with you some information about that. And in front of you, you should have a packet of, of information. In particular, I want to call your attention to the Blue Book, which is the actual local service plan. This is the document you're actually being asked to review and approve. The other information in there is for, is just for information. But before I dive into that, I do want to extend some thank yous, beginning with your Superintendent Tony Mann, who is Dr. Tony Mann. Congratulations also. And, and point out that he's been serving as the Chair of our group. Chief Administrators Council for Clackamas County includes all ten superintendents from the county and the President of Clackamas Community College. And he's been serving as our Chair this year and I'm very grateful for him serving in that role and for his thoughtful leadership and, and I know his input and insights are really valued by our colleagues. I also want to call out Director of Human Resources Jennifer Ellis, who has really stepped up this year also to co-chair the Human Resources Advisory Group and help facilitate those meetings. And she connects with our Human Resources Leader Chelsea Green on a regular basis. And they help put together an agenda. She provides a lot of topics that are of interest to that group. I also want to call out on pages ten and eleven of this document, there are a list of several other Malala River School District Professionals who need regularly with their colleagues across the county in groups that are facilitated by Clackamas T S D. And we very much appreciate their involvement and their commitment to like collaborative work with their peers across the county. I also want to point out that your district team collaborated with Clackamas County and our Student Services Team to host the first QPR training in the region. And it's a question persuade referral and that's a suicide prevention program. And they brought that to youth and adults together to be trained in suicide prevention. To, and what was that again? Then last but not least, I want to say thank you to you board members for your service. And we very much know that it is a gift of your time and talent and it requires you to look, put up a lot. And we very much appreciate your leadership and not only here in Malala, but for public education in general. And, and as a token of our appreciation, we brought you a set of note cards that feature last year's art show at Clackamas T S D. So, to the local service plan, it is developed annually. It is required by law. And we began developing that with our district advisory teams that are called out in that document. And they provide input really measuring trends and needs and issues across the county as we revise that plan to adapt to the following fiscal year. The plan is then brought to our superintendent group, the Chief Administrators Group. They spend, and this year spent quite a bit of time, quite a few meetings deliberating over those services and refining those before it goes to the Clackamas T S D Board of Directors. Once it's approved there, then we bring it to each of the ten of the school districts for your review and approval. It does cover all of our services, including our resolution services, which are those that are provided to all ten school districts and used by all ten school districts. Those are in specific areas of special education, technology, data, teaching and learning support, as well as direct revenue that your school district can then apply to T S D services of your choice. And then it also covers our contract and grant services. And those are paid for by multiple state, federal grants or contracted directly from a district or a consortium of districts that needs something in particular. The best examples of those are our early learning programs, student support services, a lot of special education, technology, teaching and learning services. And again, this has already been approved by the Board of Clackamas T S D and our superintendents. And it's here for your approval here tonight. But I also want to call out a few other documents in there, beginning with a fiscal report that's done annually. And that looks like this for you. Included in your packet is also a paper copy of each of the other component of school districts, just for your reference. But this is a detailed report for your district that indicates the overall value of services that were delivered by Clackamas T S D in the previous year. And it highlights some of the key services that we have made available. There, it does reflect more than four point six million dollars of value of total services from Malala River. And it also reflects more than five hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars in revenue that was spent directly to you. It also describes vibrant partnerships in early learning evaluation and support services, support for improvements and enhancements to curriculum and instruction, especially in the areas of literacy and math and STEM and CTE. And it also provides support to migrant students, providing special education services to students with very complex needs. We support school nurses and counselors and help address students' mental health and behavioral needs. We also provide a range of data and technology support. We hope that the format of this report is useful. And if there are some changes or information relates to the future documents, you welcome that. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I might be falling a little bit slow, but can you help me understand the difference between four point six million and total services delivered versus one point seven for four services? What's that delta? I'm not sure if I understand the numbers.
So, oh, for the, the, the one point seven six four million are the core services that aren't delivered at all. All school, I mean, those are the services that you received. And then on top of that, the funded and or contracted services total is exceeds four point five million, four point six million.
So basically, we total.
Yeah, yeah. So if you look in here, there's detail and the.
Oh, I'm with you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So how does this compare to last year's? I'm just curious. I don't remember that the number.
Yeah, um, last year, your, this is about six hundred thousand dollars increase from last year. The, it was about four million and this is four point six million. And it's about twenty thousand dollars more in direct revenue that came back to you last year. You received about five hundred thirty seven thousand dollars and this year it was five hundred fifty seven.
Yeah. I was really glad to see you have a section here of performance measures under seven, where you look at the cost and effectiveness of your programs. Are those reports something that you make available?
Uh, yeah, we can, which, where, where were you interested?
On page seven, well, I'm just curious. I'm curious about your methodology. So how, I assume this is performance measures. Clackamas T S D regularly assesses the cost and effectiveness of its programs. And I've just, this is more of a curiosity for another reason, but I'd like to know how you define success. You know, how close you're getting to a, what's the method that you call it?
Yeah, there is, there is one consistent across the board. And that's what, one of the things about any T S D, but especially Clackamas T S D, is that there are multiple silos of funding and, and requirements that come along with those funds. So for example, if Malala is contracted with us, for example, if you don't, but, but if you did, for nursing services, that would be one thing that we would evaluate. Of course, the biggest evaluation is, do you renew that service? And is it working for you and we're providing full value? Versus our early learning program and early learning and evaluation, where we are answering to the Department of Early Learning and Care and Health host of measurements that we are.
So in the early learning, you're getting data from the wall river about the result of the program to demonstrate its effectiveness.
Well, well, we could disaggregate our data for Malala, but we're actually looking at it holistically.
Okay.
So for our evaluation services for all, there are eight districts that participate in our evaluation services.
We're different. Thank you.
Yeah, so it, so it's, sorry, I can't give you one answer because it's just multiple categories. I can keep going, but they're all, they're all different. And then, you know, if they're a federal grant, then there's a whole other word issue with that. Yeah, so it's multifaceted.
Any other questions? I just have one more question.
Yeah.
Um, is it beneficial for school district staff to be in these advisory groups as far as knowing what's coming down the pipeline for grants and stuff? Look at things like that.
Yeah, it can be. It, it depends on the, the specific group, especially for teaching and learning. That, that's very much true for that group. But, but I would say that the, the real value in these advisory groups is being able to form a colleague group that has a shared, excuse me, shared, shared professional expertise. And they're able to exchange ideas and exchange answers and solutions to problems that they're, they're facing or get ahead, get ahead of something and know about it in advance. They also do a number of collective project or collaborative projects. So for example, with H R, looking at creating some mentor programs that they might share and be a part of. And so there are a lot. And I think also for new professionals, there's a, a great deal of mentoring and connection that's created with this groups. Yeah.
I'm going, are there any else?
Chair of the panel, there's a couple of other places where the T S D has been vertically in accord to our success here in the district. Uh, the, uh, you may, the board may recall, it was about twelve months ago, I think, we had a cybersecurity incident in our district that thank goodness didn't result in any, you know, financial impact in the district other than the costs associated with responding to it and then working to prevent it from happening again. And the T S D jumped into the table with us, helped us work through that in a really effective way. And I think too that today, our Director Chris Shaw has been working with T S D staff in particular to tell them some cybersecurity efforts to ensure that we're as tight as they come. And we actually met Director Luke not too long ago. So one example of that is I've been getting hit with emails that were pretty sophisticated today. And they're phishing for me to push on the wrong button. And they're, they're our system.
Internal, yeah.
They're our system that's running a hypothetical scenario to see if any of our employees are susceptible to clicking on the wrong button. And if we are, you know, how do we find them? So again, that's, that's the T S D's leadership and support assisting Chris Shaw in that. Thanks. So, yeah, it wasn't mentioned earlier, but that idea is always really helpful.
We're, we are a management provider for what's called penetration testing and test. And it will, it will develop a full management report. And obviously, that's a new brief session, but that helps identify vulnerabilities and solutions for those. And continually doing that is a really important part of keeping a healthy system in place. And as you know, it's changing constantly.
What happens if our systems get hijacked and we can't use them? What happens at school?
It shuts down.
Goes to pencil paper, right?
Oh, it goes to pencil paper and it would take at least two days to get all of our systems back up. So we had to close school for a few days.
Clicked, signed, and come back.
College this last year and do that for five days. This is a real threat. It's from, yeah.
Thank you for asking. And again, thank you to the T S D for your help.
Question, are, is the school's information, whether it be grades, personal records, that kind of stuff on a closed system? Or is that connected and vulnerable to cyber breakdowns all?
Yeah, I mean, again, the T S D provides a lot of support in that space. And I would say the short answer to the question is yes, it is the own system. Yes, we're doing everything to protect personally identifiable information. Yes, we're in line with your board policy on personally identifiable information. If you want a deeper discussion, specifically.
No, I just, it was just a thought that popped into my head. I mean, I didn't want to, you know, have a laptop with everything on it and, you know, here it is jacked into the internet and everybody can grab it. Or anybody who knows how to could grab it. Yeah.
I'd be glad to meet with the board members, as Larry suggested a moment ago, is it would not be good practice to talk about the strategies for cybersecurity for, you know, in a public meeting because it shows, you know, the system. So, but yeah, if we'll learn more, we'll let it off.
No, that's, that, that answers my question. Making sure that that's in a closed system.
But I, I will tell you that Malala does subscribe to our fire service, which is, which is a very.
I'm sure we, they asked to take action on this too.
I don't believe so. Yeah. Oh, we are. Sorry. There wasn't under.
Can I, actually, I, I prefer to get this a day or two ahead of time. There's, there's a lot of really good stuff in here. This is something, a lot of trouble expense to present this. I've had ten minutes to look at, but I was really quick. So that's next year, that's about.
Do you have?
Oh, yeah, I started, I thought this was a near electronic.
It is. It's important.
Then it's my fault. I take that.
I was gonna say, wow, we tried to make sure you had at least thirty days.
Do you have a deadline though, as far as our?
Uh, we, we, we do, that, at the end of this.
Oh, I think that's not good. Okay.
So.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure. I've been, we have driven the Clackamas Educational Services District Service Plan. I present.
Moved it second.
Second.
Any further discussion? I think having your man and other stuff. Advisory boards, they trust the information and it looks very similar to previous. Team on there. Yeah. Okay, all in favor of approving the local, the Clackamas T S D Local Service Plan? Presented, great. Thank you very much.
Should I share one, one more feel I didn't get out there? And that is, speaking of, we, we do have space on our budget committee. And we would love to invite any member of the Law School Board. Our budget committee is made up of members of school boards. And we currently do not have anyone from the law serving on that board. And if you are interested and willing, please let your superintendent know. We would love to talk to you about that, that, that group convenes in May. And I mean, it's certainly from the law that he, yeah, thank you very much.
Did you have any feedbacks during? Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, next up we have action items, recommendation for approval of inter-district transfer request for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. That is an overview of that. The purpose of the gen item is to take action related to board policies, J E P. Inter-district transfer of resident students and J E C D admission of resident students. So this is an agenda item that comes every year, the chair. Yes.
I move that we allow for permission to transfer in or out of the district be granted from period of March first to August first. And I, and that's all. You know, so. I was saying, all transfers, wherever the all should be.
Allow for any number of students.
Yeah, allow for any number of students.
Okay. Move the second in. Any questions?
I need a reminder of the thinking, what's the rationale for putting in March first to August first? Is that to protect, to stabilize our headcount?
It is around stabilizing headcount, projecting class sizes, assigning students to classroom. Basically sure we have balanced class sizes. That's the rationale. And this hasn't worked for us since Spain constructed it by for the last ten years. Not afraid to compete with the surrounding districts because I think we have just as many coming in as, as leaving. There've been some years I think where we've had more coming in than we've had leaving. But to answer your question, it was about classing size before class began. Okay, not that we limit, but it's more, it makes sense. It informs our staffing level. We need to replace the circular screen. Yeah.
And March is the same date because that's kind of early enough, I guess, or I, sorry, late enough, probably in the year. That's the year. And then August is early or the beginning.
Then there are, there are times when families will drop off a transfer request in February. I believe that was an example. And we'll hold on to it, let's them know that we will consider that beginning March first. And again, if it's approved a hundred percent.
I'm sure.
I'm sorry, I, I have a comment. It's, it's kind of, it relates to this, but it's also to the tangents. Oh, I noticed in this item before us, there's an administrative recommendation as to what to do. I seem to recall that I think last year and more than once, we had that kind of administrative recommendation as to what to do. I like that. I think that's really helpful to me with regard to things like, we're honestly with regard to anything probably that we would take action on except for consent agenda. And just for sake of information, I would love to see that for items, action items in the agenda. I'd like to know what, you know, we're putting in certain ones that are kind of recommendation, administrative recommendation, especially how the superintendent feels about it. That doesn't necessarily mean I won't get a board superintendent's recommendation, but, you know, just as for future thought, I would not have that stand, but I would like to, by the end of the meeting, so.
Thank you.
That's for doing it.
Just a comment as to some of the, also some of the history around our, our policy related to this. Yeah, thirteen years ago, even some of these board members were here. I was interviewed about filling a vacant position on the board. And I was asked a question by a board member at that time is, well, how would you define success for the law school board with relation to, how will you know when you've been successful and effective as a school board member? And the comment I gave them at that time was, it's as simple as when more people want to be in this district than want to be getting out of this district. And, and at that time, it was a pretty substantial differential, the other direction. There were a lot more families requesting to be out of the whole municipal district than getting in. Then it was like ten to one. And so I know we've come a long way. And the reason I bring that up right now is I would love to see as we move toward budget season and things, is that data number still revisited as to what does the effect of this policy of being open and honest about it to the world? And what does that look like now? Are there more people trying to get in and getting out? That's all I have. So thanks.
So it was mentioned second, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Sorry, who was the second? Linda, you seconded it, right? Yeah, okay. Okay, all in favor for approving the inter-district transfer request for twenty twenty five, twenty six presented tonight? All in favor? Yep. It's on here. Okay, I was gonna say, she's here. Okay. Next up, we have information discussion, capital projects update. And we have lots of presenters on that tonight. Moving forward. If I hold, hand this up to Tony, if you don't mind, Tony?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Do you mind if I hand this up to you?
Perfect. Yeah. We're, so we're got technology here. Uh, I T Director Chris Shaw has helped move us step by step through the twenty five century. And we've got some new technicals we're using that I think is kind of seamlessly sharing in our bodies. So.
And just in case people forgot names, I mean.
Wrong story.
Yeah, we've been in the back. But if you read.
Bob Collins.
And then in the back.
Steve Nelson, Alightful Service Architects.
The adult health contractors.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And this is the Rockstar team. Those who are going to speak might have come up. But right, this is the Rockstar team. We meet at least once a week, sometimes twice a week. For as many as three or four hours on any given day. And some days it's for an entire day. We have a lot of fun with these folks. Tonight, the purpose of the agenda is to run toward a, effectively a financial report on the status of our work on the capital construction project of replacing lawn. More I provide tonight is really a high level look at finances. And the more we get into actual construction spaces, the detail, you get more specific. Tonight, we're going to look at it at a high level. And at the same time, we're prepared to respond to any questions that the rest of us have. I'm going to turn it forward to members of the team here as we go. This first slide you'll see has an orange background, but we, I was kind of being silly. I, you know, I like the color, but I decided that really it should have a black background. Because we're in the black, not red. We like to be in the black. And so I'm going to turn it to Mr. Campbell here to really capture what this first slide says. But our capital destruction budget is just like our annual district wide budget. And it's overall construct. And so we're going to go back and forth. Each of us has pieces of this. As I said, if you have questions during, you're welcome to ask during, welcome to ask after. Doesn't matter. We just want to make sure you have the answers to any questions.
What question? Can we, can we screen share this? In Zoom? It would help me.
Is it not, is it not sharing? Yeah. Yeah, that would be good for the audience as well.
Yeah, that would be Terry can see it too.
Thanks for catching that.
Yes.
There we go.
You can try.
All right. Thank you. New technology. All right, I'm going to give it to Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Tony. I think I'll tap into a, a previous CFO. You guys may know him, Rick Gill. One of his famous sayings to me was, a budget is an estimate. And as soon as you issue a budget, it's wrong. Okay, that's an estimate. Uh, the middle school project is no different. It's full of estimates, revenue, expenditure, prudent reserves. Uh, the voters approved the district to sell seventy seven point four six million dollars of general obligation bonds. We pay for those by levying a tax rate, again, approved by the voters of a dollar fifty five per thousand tax asset value for a period of thirty years. Uh, now, you know, based on the market and the structure of our debt, that rate actually is only good for twenty five years. And at that point, we can lower it down to eighty six cents per mil, uh, per thousand tax assessed value. And, you know, I'm a boring CPA. I can talk about detailed numbers all day long. That's not why we're here tonight. Uh, I think Tony's going to do a really good job of giving you a high level look in the revenue numbers. And I'll turn it over to Tony.
You know, I just want to take, when, when things can go wrong, they do go wrong. I might have actually said, we'll read the long slide deck. So if I did, we're going to still make sure you have the information you need. So there's no secrets here. All right. And of course. So I think. So, uh, I think this slide had you on it.
Yeah, I just.
You spoke of this, that.
There was technology with me.
No, to, to recap, uh, you know, we're, we're keeping a promise, uh, uh, tax assessed value of a dollar fifty-five per thousands. Uh, for twenty-four years, after that, it drops down to eighty-six cents per thousand.
That bond revenue from the voters that was produced when, um, we sold it once was this seventy-seven or six million dollars, again. Much of this may be a review, but again, for board members, it's help, if you're like me, it's helpful sometimes to hear things a second time, and those who are watching at home, we want to be really transparent. Always are with our document consensus.
I just have a.
She that.
Um, so is that? Can you go back to the previous slide, sorry? Is this information on our bond website?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the public is.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And so the, that, that revenue from the bond sales. Produced seventy-seven point four six million dollars, and one of the things I've learned over time that helped, again. Helps me, I think I've heard it helps other people too, is how we make complex things clear. Uh, and sometimes when I'm thinking in millions and multiple decimal, you know, multiple figures, it's, it's helpful if we look at it, you know, in round numbers that are conservative. So that's why the shares might are round numbers, if you want it down to a penny. Uh, Campbell has that document that is our budget down to the penny, has been shared with bond oversight committee and the board, actually, each of the last several meetings that folks have had. But the, the caveman mathematician in me, uh, has to think about this in straightforward terms, so I'm just going to round that down to be conservative to seventy-seven even. Now I'm thinking about it as seventy-seven units, right? So seventy-seven cents, but to minimize the fact that this is real money, these are large amounts of money that taxpayers have granted us access to. But it just, again, the caveman mathematician in me helps, just think about it in round figure, you know, we've got seventy-seven. Million payment and revenue. In addition, we had eighteen million dollars in special revenue that came to the district in three different fashions, one. Eager investors wanting to pay a little extra premium because of the school director's rating, credit rating together with the state of Oregon, and the. Circumstances in the market that day, right? I've learned since that it's really typical for a school district or any public agency, whether you're. A city, well, I shouldn't say a city, it's got different structures, but, uh, a police department, uh, uh. Fire departments, uh, school district, the community college. It's reasonable to expect that you'll have additional revenue beyond the bonds themselves because premiums are paid, these are safe investments. Additionally, when we receive those dollars, we put them in the bank, and there's interest that's on our money. So you put those together with the unexpected possible grant money, and that's eighteen million dollars of special revenue that we saw. Those are in similar situations, see additional revenue. We couldn't bank on that additional eighteen million in the pre-bond process, and yet. It becomes part of a variable that keeps us in a really safe, conservative space financially, so we talk about that. Again, just that caveman math, that total revenue then increased to ninety-five million without costing the voters anything more than was promised. So that dollar fifty-five per thousand tax assessed value that Andy spoke about. It will, it will be that until that twenty-fifth year, when it dropped to eighty-six cents, and that's the way that the bond was structured. So we're over-delivering in that respect to what we told the voters in the voters' pamphlet. Without costing the voters any more, we've got that ninety-five million dollars. I'm going to turn it to Ron.
Question for Andy, and this, what's, what we've got over so far is the same thing we've handed out each month in the oversight committee into the board. Yes, these numbers are true numbers.
No, not true, it's not the numbers. Thank you for that, yeah, this is, yeah, we'll keep coming back to it. And we met actually today with bond oversight committee co-chairs and walked them through this, so continuing to share the information. So we've, we've been designing a school, um, and this should actually say we're designing a school instead of it's been designed, because it's not finished yet. Uh, that's a, that's a typo on my part, I'm going to turn it to Mickey, uh, to talk about the school that we are still designing.
And we are in design, so we're about fifty percent through our DDs, which is our design development documents. Um, so the design is still in progress, at this time, with knowing our budget amount, we have committed cost to construction, professional services, and owner costs, which have been shared. In the budget by Andy, and at this time, we have earmarked seventy-four for construction, professional services of ten point five, and owner costs. That we've identified and bucketed is about three point five million. Now, at this time, these are committed expenditures, there are more actualized and realized expenditures in the professional services where we've actually, um, contracted work to consultants. There's still more work to contract to reach up to that ten point five million, but we're, we're trending in this direction. Yes.
Let's open that.
So the eighty-eight, that's eleven more than the seventy-seven, the voters voted on, what has changed to account for that eleven million?
Yeah, let me speak to that, because I think it was you, Director, we didn't really ask at a recent meeting to make sure that when we brought financial records back, financial information back, that we're always referencing back to that seventy-seven point four six. What I'll tell you is that. Hold for slide nineteen, because there's quite a few items on slide, I think it's slide nineteen that we want to speak to. Um, and so if you're okay, we're going to get to that here shortly. So at this point. After that eighty-eight million dollars, um, is spent and encumbered, we still have seven million dollars left. Uh, that is that proof reserve, that, that contingency grew in this scenario from the three percent that we projected. When we put the bond before the voters, which is a very, very tight contingency. Um, to this larger contingency now. How, how, so someone asked, so tell me, how, how is it, you've got all this much more revenue, right? How come you didn't know this, I mean, right? It's not that we didn't know it, but there were various things that we couldn't, we couldn't guarantee, we didn't know exactly how much premium might be paid. So. With those seven left, it's that proven reserve, that contingency protects us in a whole bunch of circumstances, I'm going to turn it to Ron to talk about why that contingency is important.
Good, well, you have to use a very familiar contingency in your, in your budget for a district or a home, but it's for the unknowns and unforeseen's. And there are many on this project, so we are, we are not even construction doctor yet, we're still in design development, we said, left the conceptual phase. It looked really nice when we did the video, the walkthrough, like we designed the building, but we're not there yet, we were just speaking today about what kind of mechanical system we're going to have in the building. So let's see if I can identify it yet. Uh, so offsite improvements, we don't know if that's going to be two million dollars or six million dollars, for example, those are big swings, we're working with the city on with requirements of our. Of course, everyone's concerned about the tariff, tariffs, and material costs are going to be, and we've had some significant swings in material costs over the years, we've got it forecasted out, and it just made those things. Uh, supply chain variables, and it could be another COVID incident, where things were just not going to be available. And it may have been COVID, it could be something else, big, big things are happening in our world. Um, unexpected abatement costs, we don't know yet the cost for abatement, we're going to plan for five hundred thousand, but it could be seven hundred and fifty thousand, it could be six hundred thousand, we just don't know yet. And obviously, um, unforeseen weather, that's, uh, un- unseasonable weather, unseasonable weather could happen as well, that's going to delay or be more cost, but. The number of variables, when you started digging in the ground, are many, and we've done some due diligence with our civil investigation of the soils, but. Uh, after you start digging, you might find something else, so many things, unknowns and unforeseen's we haven't found yet. We need to plan for. So are you assuming all seven million of contingency, contingency to address those things, or do you have estimates in the ninety-five million? Four was that expected next? Or are you counting on this, uh, to cover it? I'd count, well, I can't, I have seven to cover that, and as well as, yeah, additional cost specialty.
In our budget, we, we earmarked dollars specifically for things we know we're going to be spending money on, and we try to be conservative in assessments.
But if your question is, do we plan on spending this? No, we're playing. No, I'm not asking it very clearly, we know that there are potential unexpected, you go like this and say, it could be as much as three million, and that three, three million is part of the eighty-eight. Or are you saying, here's some unexpected things that could happen, and we're going to rely on the seven million to cover it, whether it's zero or seven, seven is the second thing I said? Yes, whether it's zero or seven million, that's. Okay, right, thank you.
So the, the cost that we're on the previous slide. Construction cost. So those numbers included. What we anticipated, or I'm sorry. What we're anticipating, like, as far as, like, um, the city's costs or the. The permits and all that, that includes what we still think it's going to be, or it's up from where we. Had budgeted previously, like, in the estimate. What is included in our cost is, is additional items that was included in the previous estimate, yes. Um, it's based on more of what we are actually knowing at this time, in our owner costs, we do have a forecasted cost for permits and items like that. The big unknown is the extent of. The right-of-way work that we're working through negotiations with the city right now, we have budgeted for amount, there was an amount that was provided as a line item amount in the bond, we fill our out, we have also budgeted. For certain, um, up, upgrades as well, but then there could be a whole slew of additional items that they let us to cover. Which they, which they have provided to us, and we have put numbers to it.
Are those numbers included under the construction costs or the owners' costs?
Um, the additional unknown that the city is.
Well, no, just any, any additional, any costs for development that the city is requiring, where, which category.
For permitting, we have that included in owner costs.
Okay.
Because that's an owner cost, I would have, and construction cost is, um, basically a hundred percent what would be in tense's contract. And they don't, they don't cover permits. They cover, they don't cover permits, they cover trade permits, like electrical, mechanical, things like that, that their subcontractors will be. Uh, procuring, but as far as a building permit or a erosion control permits will be covering those costs too.
So, street. Improvements, sewer improvements, anything like that? Or, or under the construction cost?
So as you question, both places?
Yes.
Fees, permits, system development charges, owner costs, construction of streets, construction.
And possible filling into that seven, but it's unknown at this time.
The seven to help out, streets are more than anticipated.
Any other questions at this point?
All right, then I'll proceed, we've got three or four more slides we're going to touch on, uh, and we'll engage in whatever conversation further the board has interested in, so. Again, we spoke about that contingency. Ron spoke about all the, you know, some, this couldn't be all, right, there are a whole bunch more that can never have an all exhaustive list. Um. And at the, at the same time, we are, as Vicki pointed out, we're still in the design process, there's still more work happening, and that design process has involved. A whole bunch of input, input from the community in the pre-bond process. Input from youth sports throughout the process, input from our bond oversight committee members through the process, input from the board, each time we've met with you, we've heard questions, everything, spurred on thinking. We've met with all of the staff at Millwall River School twice, Millwall River Middle School twice, to see their input, both this whole group, and then in targeted groups by subject area, science teachers specifically. CTE teachers specifically, so their voices are coming to the table as well, who am I missing? Maybe I've heard from. We heard from. So we're designing this school, and we're designing this school to be completed on time. And to meet the needs of our students today, tomorrow, and through the next however many decades, and the voice of others are helping shape it, so what does that mean? You go. We're designing a school that has everything that we promised the voters in the pre-bond language, and. We have not moved it to the Cadillac. It's certainly not the Volkswagen.
What do you say about Volkswagen?
I wrote Volkswagen for decades. Volkswagen Beetle, that is.
Yeah.
But this is a durable, strong, confident building that we heard our voters tell us, we want, we want. Um, that durability piece as opposed to, uh, the jewel piece, and I think you'll see that in our conversations, and that's the English teacher view is choosing those words, I know our finance director would be a whole bunch more direct, but, um. Could we, could we spend a whole bunch more money? I'll tell you, boy, you know, there are districts that spend a whole bunch more money on a school for seven hundred students, and there are schools that have spent less. But based on the input we've received, we've got value adds that have been, uh, included in this design. That were not promised to the voters, but I believe that they're critically important to produce the kind of school that our students are going to need into the future, that's why I'm going to ask Mr. Dalton, who's at home. Uh, to join us on Zoom and speak to this next slide deck where he talks us through the, the, the value adds that have come as a result of that community input. And we did test mics, Mr. Dalton, but. You want to go ahead and jump in there if we can hear you?
Yeah, how's that sound?
Okay.
All right, that's great, well, good evening, yeah, uh, this is a real exciting project that this community, uh, really deserves, our students deserve, this hard-working staff deserve. And in, in the planning, we, we designed a school that is, um, based on student needs and expanding their opportunities. And just really at the core of it, middle school is just trying to, you know, have a, a welcoming environment that is smaller in size. And, uh, we really kept our eye on that to create smaller learning communities or neighborhoods, uh, pods that we have, where we have, um. Grade level. Pods, you might recall, it's a two-story building, so, um, there'll be a grade, grade level on top, a grade level on bottom, and a grade level that's, uh, shared between the top and the bottom. And what that will do is that will create this smaller community where they will have less places to get lost, um, quicker transitions, and just form a, a real solid, uh, community. Uh, atmosphere in those. Uh, our support and ed spaces, our, our life skills program in this model is going to be a wonderful area where, uh, students are going to have a. Small kitchenette in there where they can learn to cook, there's going to be a washer and dryer in there so they can learn those skills as well. Uh, just a great learning space for them, where there's also a, uh, a room in which they can, a calming room, where, uh, if they need to take a small little break. Uh, there's going to be a restroom within that, uh, room for any special, uh, toileting needs. And they're going to be right up against these wonderful, this wonderful courtyard, uh, that is inviting, uh, that allow access to the students to some fresh air in a contained area. Uh, where the students can kind of stretch their legs and, uh, just enjoy the sunlight. We also have some other supported ed spaces, uh, on the top floor, that life skills I just described is on the bottom floor, on the top floor, we've got some, uh, learning, uh, spaces. Uh, for those students. Uh, the community and the students are really going to enjoy the CTE centers that we have in store, we've got a. Uh, it'll be a wonderful robotics engineering room, that we've got plans on having a, um. Robotic, um, space where they can design robots and, uh, have it in a field where they can practice programming the robot. Um, besides the robotics and engineering room, we've got a construction technology room. Which right now, we're, we're, we can only plug so many things at one time before we blow the fuse, but in this model, uh, you can kind of think of a mini shop. Um, where it has your drill presses, where it has a chop saw, uh, where it'll have those tools that they can design, design things. It's going to be wonderful, wonderful space for the students. Uh, we also have a, uh, family consumer science room, hopefully, uh, in store, if all goes well. Where we'll have six, uh, kitchen areas where students will be not just learning how to make food, but there's more to it, there. There's measuring, you know, there's marketing, my hope is to develop some kind of business and, uh, run it out of that. Um, room, similar to maybe what the high school does. That's going to be a wonderful room for the students as well. We'll have a digital lab that I really want to put to work with the online presence with. Um. You know, the, um, power of social media, YouTube. Um, students need to understand how to utilize some of that, those tools, as well as some marketing tools. Within there, and so we'll have graphics, graphics lab within that digital lab, that'll be our, kind of our computer lab for testing as well, and within that digital lab, we have a. Um, a space for our Wolverine TV, a recording studio. Uh, which would be wonderful, they'll, they do a spectacular job, and giving them these tools will be amazing. And finally, we'll have a, a wonderful art room with, uh, two kilns, we're, we're hoping for, right now, um, our kiln is. The north parking lot, so our. We're we're hoping for right now, um our kiln is the north parking lot, so our teacher has to trek out there with their students. And there's just one uh where we're planning for, hopefully we can have two kilns within this art room and ten pottery wheels. And just gonna be a wonderful space. All those CTE um rooms are basically surrounding another courtyard. Which is an absolute spectacular space where projects can be built in that courtyard uh safely. Um as well as some of those messier things can be outside, getting some fresh air. And the beauty of that space, it makes a nice uh thorough fare to go from the um construction technology. And right into our theater. So our theater space that we have. Uh in store is is gonna be a wonderful space for all kinds of things, including small theater performances. Uh you can have a choir concert in there, you can have your school board meetings in there. We can have class, class meetings. I thought you might like that. We'd have class meetings, uh we can have classes in there. It's just gonna be a spectacular performance theater uh that is basically kind of connected to that. Uh an area in which sets can be built and just kind of wheeled in. So it's a real clever, um thanks to Opsys and their bright minds. Um gonna be a wonderful area and that theater is gonna be uh spectacular. It's really gonna be a nice feature uh and give kids what they deserve. And I know uh as well as the committee knows, the the importance of youth sports or sports in general. And what that value adds, and we wanna make sure with the outdoor facilities having the same number of fields, but also the gym space. And we've accounted for, you know, three nice courts within this gym space and having more bleacher seating. Uh in the gym that we previously planned for. That was one of the big inputs that we heard from the community teachers, youth sports. It's very popular and having proper seating uh for events is super important. So in the most current plan, we've got, of course, bleacher seating for all of the student body. And we have additional seating uh for an auxiliary court, uh which will be, which will be great. So all those are kind of value adds. Uh making this building uh very special.
Thanks, Mr. Dalton. Uh and again, Randy covered that beautifully. I just maybe even put another exclamation point on number eight as an example of where. Input has informed where we're landing. Um the feedback we received from youth sports was, we need more space. On the edge of those boards, we need more seating. And so we went back to the to the drawing board and, you know, folks on the team, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, the rails. Director Lockridge, right? We wanted to see, we wanted to talk, you know, parking. We wanna make sure we get folks off the street. And so, yeah, chattering pencils and going back to that. So the back and forth process has resulted in an eighty-eight million dollar. At this point in time, encumbrance, that's the right word, with seven million remaining in contingency. In the pre-bond process, we were working with the best information we had at the time. Um you know, the partners that we had at the table, um. From the firm that was facilitating that process with us. They had to use the information they had at the time. Might they have been including some of those additional revenues? And bond premiums and interest in their conversation with us, um may have. At the end of the day, I'm warning you, I think that it is standard operating procedure that you put a number before the voters. And those additional dollars give you a whole place to be safe and conservative and. Reach possibly even further as these eight items do. So uh with that said, I wanna turn it back to Mickey uh for last comment. I know this kick tires and have a conversation. And the provision we made of this last slide is not the one that uh we already had. So it's gonna say that, but it's the same without side.
The biggest thing is that we are maintaining the budget that we have set within, that we've shown here. We are keeping our promises to the community and the voters with the pre-bond language in addition to uh the items that Randy went over. And then we have conservative reserves. So we have seven million in in reserves at this point. Um which is a higher percentage than the three percent that was initially identified. So we are forecasting to be on budget at this point.
We have the history of our budget. So our budget started out at seventy-seven million. Then this event happened and it went to eighty, then this event happened, now it's eighty-eight. Is there a history of that? I need some, that's, I need help reconciling that. We made a commitment to the voters of seventy-seven. Now, maybe I understand the reason that you're questioning that. But do we have, do we have uh that history showing the budget changes? And what is the process to say now with this budget?
So that all of our documents have been public. Our bond website has all of that free line material in it. Um we did not include, again, that pre-bond budget. I do not believe any of the additional revenues that you're looking at here. So. So that 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 conversation did not include any projected additional revenue beyond the seventy-seven.
Maybe I'll ask it different ways. So the, I love the stuff. I saw what I saw to the value add. Does that value add? Add up to eleven million? Does that account for the difference between seventy-seven and eighty?
I have to look to the expert's answer with that question. But again, I could also emphasize that. Not, we're not charging the voters anymore. And as Ron said, we're not trying to go out and spend all these additional dollars. We're we're really working to remain conservative. Eric Lutz's question is, those value adds, the difference between seventy-seven and eighty-eight. Am I understanding that right?
Yeah, I mean, I would I would say the conservative would be our budget seventy-seven. And that if we can get the budget done for that, then the 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 extra money that we got, that we're talking about, what options we have back to the voters.
So let's talk about that for a moment, because we have done a lot of research in that space. One of the questions that came up was, you know, if we're able to hold on to any of these dollars. And spend down debt early, what might that look like? I would tell you that if we were to take anything more than um well, over-stated. We could refinance. And and just like you refinance, oh, there's a whole bunch of costs associated with refinancing. And no one, including our bonded legal counsel, has suggested that's a prudent approach. But I would turn Andy to speak to, for every million dollars, if we wanted, if we wanted a tax holiday. That put a million dollars back to the voters, what would that worth?
Well, if we had a million dollars left over, we decided to apply that to a year one tax holiday. It would save the voters seventeen cents on their assessed value. Um average assessed value in Malala is around four hundred thousand, so you're looking at about sixty-eight dollars per household.
For one year, for one year, for that million dollars.
So is it? Would it be safe to set aside a million out of that seven, just as a reserve specifically for that? At this moment in time? Or we wanna keep the seven million just in case?
No, I'm, you know, look to to Andy here, but I'm comfortable jumping out and saying, at the end of the day, we're doing this at the pleasure of the board. These are dollars that you put a bond before the voters and we're by some direction to say, hey, we wanna set some dollars aside. And hold that as a space to pay down debt by a million dollars. And we want you, superintendent man, to hold it there until the eleventh hour. If you if you need to come back, come with it, please do. But otherwise, we wanna see as your board, that million dollars held down for that purpose, who would certainly follow that, follow that direction. I, I am um really excited about what this school will be for eighty-eight million dollars. Really excited about what that would do for kids and the community in the future. It's not lost on me that it's not the seventy-seven million dollars that we're spoken with about the voters. I'm hesitant to to suggest anything other than we were working with the best information that our contractors were providing without, providing specific at the time. And uh, you know, your superintendent didn't fully appreciate how much additional revenue public bodies get when they pass bonds.
If we had about that additional revenue, we'd be in big trouble. We'd be in, like, like any other.
That's smaller.
Just one last question. So right now, the budget's eighty-eight. And soon we decide, well, we really, it needs to be ninety. Who approves it going from eighty to ninety? Is that the budget oversight committee? Is that administration? Is that?
Yeah, so I I guess, you know, this is a first rodeo for me, but I would tell you, I won't do that without consulting with the board. I won't do that without consulting with bond oversight committee, being really transparent. But I've looked to the team here who's been there and done this before. You know, if if a school district were at this point in the game, say we've got encumbrances projected at eighty-eight million dollars. And all of a sudden, nine months from now, we're thinking it's gonna be ninety, not eighty-eight. What's the process that school districts go through at that point to? Make that decision? It's a naive question.
In my my experience, the budget's ninety-five, and there's a contingency amount, and unless we are charged otherwise, that's available for all those unknowns unforeseen. And we communicate that with bond oversight committee and the board, so that happens. But if, different approach you stated about getting commission of the dance or what you should advance. You have to hear that, but otherwise, the budget's ninety-five and you draw from the contingency for things like three million dollars or one for six trees. That's everything, right?
Question, this is more for maybe Andy as much as anybody, but I mean, doesn't every penny that comes into this district? Have to get accounted for in the budget you do every year?
Yeah.
And it is technically the board that appropriates that money by folding it in their June meeting to approve. Or approve for a minute, the budget you've created. So.
Yeah, you'll you'll be asking June to approve the appropriation for five, four, twenty-five, which is a little school budget.
And so I think that's the process part, that it has to go through that budget.
Oh, okay. I just have a concern. When you're thinking about an extra gym or all this other stuff, don't you have to start building that? In and, I mean, if you just save the money aside and then you're thinking about building an extra gym, but it's gonna be later. You haven't built that into the school and that makes it more difficult. So you need to commit that money in order to make those plans work. So I don't see how you can, you know, you're gonna have to make that decision.
I would, you, Mickey, I'd like to speak to that, because there are these, there are these milestones that we worked toward, and at some point in time, you can't look back.
Yeah, we can.
Yes, that's very true. So at this time, what we're looking at is our list of additional items that we have included in the design. Was a lot more expansive, but we have since pulled some things out and we include them as add alternates. So it's exactly what you're saying, where we are, we do get down to. Uh some point before we start construction, we can look at putting those back into the project if the budget allows for that. But there is definitely a point, and it's coming up very soon, that once we pull something out. And it'll cost more to put it back in.
I think the value of adding that to the school now is gonna be much greater if you add that now than later. So it's gonna be a lot more expensive. Everything is getting expensive every time time flies by. We're getting more and more expensive. We're getting to the point where we can't do that. Yes, so I would rather just, you know, take the big bite and just go for it.
And just to, can I just, I'm really quick, and correct me if I'm wrong, but. Um since you've had your recent meetings, this eighty-eight million was. Discovered, I mean, through your meetings and through the additions and whatnot, and dwindling down. This was just a recent number that you guys came to, correct?
No, we've been forecasting the ninety-five. Since September?
If I may, I can, again, it goes back to the definition of the budget. The budget is ninety-five million dollars, right? The, because it's got contingencies, the eighty-eight piece begins, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, there's an estimated. Uh cost associated with building design that our um our our folks. Uh on each of these three teams are reconciling at this moment in time, and we are still, there's still plenty of work to get be done. That reconciliation is taking place between. You know, all three, all three expert groups that are here. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
But Andy, the numbers we saw there for construction, professional services and owner costs are the same numbers. We've been giving to the board and to the VOC. Yep. So that's a new discovery, uh this is what we have. Now, and.
And we have.
Yeah, the board, the board has seen these numbers before in the the budget document dated around October. Uh same for the budget, uh the bond oversight committee, they've seen the same structure of numbers.
And the additional seven for the contingencies we're showing in the owner costs column. So that contingency is line item underneath that. Topic to equal the ninety-five.
Just gonna go out on a limb and make a comment related to, you know, the the concept of of those extra dollars to be spent. Toward approvals toward the middle school uh to, you know, enhance that. The educational programs that we hope for, you know, that next fifty years. The voters approved not the price tag. They did, but the voters really think about is the dollar fifty-five per thousand. That's what they voted on, that's what they wrestled over, that's their family budget day by day that they approved. Um, you know, we can go the route of saying, oh, maybe there's a few million extra here where you're gonna. You know, give each household basically a hundred and thirty dollars back if I'm here. Versus, at the same time, you're gonna have to explain what you sacrificed to do that.
Yeah.
Because I think you'll find that the voters are gonna say, you should have built all you can build. That's what we authorized.
Yeah.
And not go over budget, no overspend, as go beyond our. And bankrupt this district. But in my opinion, that's where the people of our district would. Come down with a fairly high majority, and maybe even those that didn't approve of the bond to start. Once we have it, great, you're gonna give me a one-year holiday to vex, but you know, what is that costing?
Yeah.
Our district. Because I've gotten comments from a lot of people that did not support the bond. That have since gotten involved in what's been going on and are very much on board with what's being uh before. Regarding this bill.
So I just wanted to say that I think what we're talking about is the source progression of time. That what we really have is, or what we originally had, we had a budget of seventy-seven billion. And that was the budget, that was the budgeted revenue and expenses, because that's what our consultants kind of told us. And that's the decision we made based on what the consultants told us. But once you get the money and you start doing the actual work. Uh things change, because you have this extra revenue that we didn't expect. So that's your budgeted revenue. Your expenses, you're hoping you can keep down here at the seventy-seven million, but that's just something that solely does no jack about. You know, how to design something and how to build something, right? They just know, kinda, you know, how to estimate stuff. Sort of, sort of estimate. Uh so you got this, this big uh revenue projection. Now you gotta find out how much it's really gonna cost by having these folks do that, that planning and design work and so forth. And as they do it, you know, they could come down down here and say seventy million, but instead, the reality is, the more stuff you start adding. What they do, it starts to get closer to to, you know, a higher figure. And so now you've got uh eighty-eight million. Is what it's really gonna cost, and that's your projected expenses. Then you put in a contingency and that gets you up to the, you know, to the ninety-five million. The only thing that I would add is that I'm concerned that. Uh we not use up that whole contingency, if we can avoid it. Because as I had previously mentioned to some folks, uh every public construction project, I think I've ever seen. Has wound up doing gazillions of dollars over budget because of improved planning. And if we say, well, you know, that contingency is what we're gonna need to make sure that, you know, if things go awry. Gonna be able to build this, this, this. Uh and then what happens if it turns out to be a lot more than seven million? So I just, you just. Take great care in your estimates, you know, be be really conservative. Because I would hate to have to go back to the voters at some point and say, it's gonna cost more than ninety-five million. Now we need you to pay more money. I can't imagine how that would happen. So the the choice is gonna be to be, is we be between paying more money or taking things away. They would be happy in either scenario.
Yeah. One, just a quick comment in addition, and that is, you know, it would be so much easier to wrestle with this. Or do you do this direction or that direction? But you can't even begin design until you approve this bond. So you talk about the level of guess when you're trying to put that together. It's huge, because you can't even legally begin any kind of design until you. So in that respect, you know, this thing shifting, you know, luckily shifts up a knockdown. Because that would really challenge this, but I suppose there probably are certain barn, barn market situations where it does go the other way. Uh, but in any case, I think, uh, you know, you have to kind of understand that context when you're going out for bond, how little you actually know at that time. And it's, uh, that we can probably feel that we're, we're pretty blessed to be in this position versus the other.
And we could have done a design, we could have done design work if that would have cost. I thought that would have optioned it at the beginning.
I could ask this about, uh, the budget and the contingency. So the eighty-eight million is based on conservative, um, estimating, not too optimistic on the other side. Given your previous experience in construction like this, how, I'm thinking this from a risk standpoint, how insured are we that we can get it done without having to blow up more than the seven reserve? In other words, how competent are you, you might say? So maybe I lost a different way. If you have conservative estimates for that eighty-eight million, what percentage of the time in your previous experience did you have unfavorable variances against that conservative estimate? Is it fairly common, uncommon?
Excellent question. I, in my experience, the things that have blown budgets out of water are things like tariff changes that we can't control or forecast or COVID or forest fires or, or agency changes. There's a lot happening with the federal government right now. We, we can't anticipate that, but for the information that we do have, it is very rare. Because of a little budget, very rare. And that is, that would be poor planning on our part, which we are doing everything possible to make sure that we are planning appropriately. Yeah, it's not an option.
Just from a, uh, I guess a layman's terms or whatever. Still gonna cost the voters the one point or one point five, fifty-five or dollar fifty-five because we're, that's the bond. And we've got eighteen million dollars to play with and we're forecasting a little bit over half, using half of that. That's money that we don't have to pay back if we've got left, I, you know. I think that, you know, I see that as a blessing and that we've got that extra little bit of reserve there. You know, there's, there is no way to forecast that, you know, catastrophic events happening. You know, the price of timber doubling like, you know, it has in the past, but you know, we've got that there and if something like that happens, then you know, we we have to look at it, maybe we have to cut a few things back at that point, you know? It'd be nice to have some of that leftover that, you know, hey, we know, we've got this extra seven million. You know, we can put that back against, you know, those original bonds, but, uh, you know, just simplified, we've got eighteen million dollars to play with, we're talking about eleven million to get extra stuff put into the school that we feel is necessary and would greatly improve it. So, I mean, I'm, you know, I, things are gonna happen and, you know, as long as we're kept up with it, you know? Up to on the knowledge, hey, this is going on. And you know, unless there's something really significant, you know? That's what we kind of have our bond, uh, budget committee for oversight committee. I think, I, it, it sounds to me like you guys are headed on the right, the right path. So that's just my comment and I speak for myself. So. So another question.
Any other questions? You guys have anything else to share that maybe we didn't ask?
I'll share, and I don't know, Tony, I don't even know, you know this about me, but when I graduated college, I opened a construction company and I ran that for twelve years at this team. And if I had them, I'd probably still do it. Yeah, started to go back and get a little more schooling and go CPA route, but they're, they're just, they're killing it. So from my desk.
Well, just have one question. Put this a little positive way, you know, how what is the process in terms of that whole negotiation process that occurs with the other jurisdiction that we're building this school? Is it kind of? Here's, here's one proposal and then it's like, nope, how about this proposal? And then it works to something else. Or is it, how does this, what is this process that takes place to get you to what that final development and number will end up?
So, um, yeah, we have, um, as everybody knows here, the city has come back with some um, more offsite improvements than we had anticipated. Um, the district has used, uh, is using a land use attorney to really talk, talk with the city. Um, they actually, uh, met today, continuing discussions about, um, you know, the, uh, proportionality of what you're asking for versus, uh, what's realistic. And, and there's, they know that there's a budget, right? And they can't ask for more than a million the school district can afford with the bond dollars. And so, um, there is definitely discussions going on with a land use attorney on behalf of the district and the city, and they're talking about options. That's all I can say right now because I don't know any more than that, but the, the intent certainly is for the city to understand, work out what this project is all about and vice versa. And I, I will tell you, so far it's been, there's been some positive communication. I'd say we would know something probably by the next time you have a board meeting. So more, more direction.
So Bob, I'm getting, uh, that this, it's gonna be less than what the city initially asked for, much less. It'll be much more than the district was initially planning before the board.
And here's, here's the plan that we'd like to do. What do you think of it? Oh, we want some changes here and here and here. Okay, well, this works with the school and how it needs to function. This doesn't. And this is why would you accept removing that from your request, things like that. So it's, it's kind of just a back and forth communication process. And being able to provide pricing numbers to things that they're asking for that we haven't anticipated has been very helpful in that so that they can see that here's six million dollars additional that you're requesting that we, we have a budget for that wasn't in the original bond. It's kind of over and above things. What can we do to do less?
But this isn't, um, something they are springing on the school district. This is what agencies, Cracass County, City, Murray City, everyone does. And it's part of their development code. So not asking us to do something that hasn't been, hasn't existed for ten plus years. It's just, this is what your constitution plan is, but that maybe is more than what we can afford and what the impact of our development is to. Personally fair.
And there hasn't been a new school built here for quite some time. So, yeah. Kind of uncharted territory for a while, right? Right? There will be variances that we'll have to apply for. And that's, this is all very typical.
That's where that seven million dollar path comes in.
It better not cost that.
Well, no, 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 I'm, I'm just saying that's why that's there. Yeah, no.
And we appreciate all that you guys are doing.
We're glad it's in the hands of professionals.
We all have lives outside of this and we're volunteers and so we don't pay attention to every single number of this project for us. You know, have a little grace.
And you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
So when is our next update, this, this group?
Well, we committed to continue to be updating for, um, just in advance, at, at the very just in advance of when the bond oversight committee meets and that we stay with that plan each month for the last several months. Now, the bond oversight committee doesn't meet at this moment in time. They've made the decision to meet at our home quarterly. So their next meeting is gonna be May. But we'll be communicating with them monthly financial updates, but the meeting itself, they're still gonna get monthly reports. So we'll get the team here. I can't imagine not providing the board with an update each of your, each of your regular working. So where we are, so.
And it's, Mr. Nolte still on?
You bet, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry, did you have any questions? Is she still there? Did you have any questions, Terry?
I think she's on mute. Hey, you're off mute now, aren't you?
Did you have any questions, Terry? Can you hear us?
I'm good.
All right, yeah. Okay, next up we have board comments. We'll start with you, Rob.
I'm excited. I'm excited to see where this is going. I know it, it, there's a lot of concerns, this, that and the other, and I'm, I'm happy about the team that we have and, you know, the getting the questions answered, you know, from all of us and, you know, at every different level. It's like, I may not understand some people's questions and, you know. But it, it, it's nice that they're here, they're answering the questions, they're giving us continually updates. And I'm, I'm excited to see this and excited for September twenty-seventh.
Well, I, I love hearing about the ad-ox. Has everybody heard about Gene Hackman and this one? Took care of him back in the eighties. Yeah. And he was afraid, definitely, you know? Yeah, but now he's, he lived to be ninety-five and it's unfortunate what happened. I think it was carbon monoxide that killed him. You know, because you don't all die at once. You know what I mean? A sixty-three-year-old concert pianist dying in the dog, yeah. So something happened, you know, I, I understand him going, you know, because he's ninety-five, so all three of them. I have some stories to tell on that.
How about you, Terry?
I just wanna say that I am, like, like Rob said, I'm really excited about progress that coming about this. And looking forward to a new school. And I think it's important for us to be good partners and supportive of our, uh, neighbors and other jurisdictions. There are multiple jurisdictions that are kind of overlapping up here. But by the same token, I wanna say that that's a two-way street. And I don't want it to go both ways. So those, those jurisdictions need to understand that they also have to be with us. And I hope we will be.
Um, I just wanted to say that I think our district has amazing students that are very talented. We have lots of exciting things going on in sports and FFA and it seems like robotics. It seems like, you know, I'm scrolling through Facebook and seeing all these accomplishments and it's amazing. So we'll hopefully have some, some future students, or I'm sorry, some students in some of our future where we need to share some of their exciting gifts. So, but also to say they have great coaches, mentors, teachers. You know, the business district as well. So exciting stuff going on.
Just a comment about Cheryl Love, and I know that, uh, they were met in their early phase of their efforts, some, some curveballs with weather and and ice storms and things, and I know that they are still powering through. So again, just encouragement to everyone that can, can help these students, you know, fulfill their goals and and meeting needs of the, those that need a lot of assistance in our community, that would be great. I still believe that this whole effort that the district allows to be put forth um, in this form of the shareholder program and all, uh, changes lives. And I don't mean strictly the lives of those people that are helped. But giving our students the ability to organize and develop and to, and to put forth this effort changes a lot of students' lives. And so I think it's one of the most powerful educational things we do here. And just a huge, I would just support it.
I, I, this is a great time to be on school board. I'm thinking back to other things we got wrapped around the axle on that were sort of looking, you know, minor details by my mind. Now we're looking at future school boards, school improvement plans. I like being in this lane a lot better and suddenly, and the way to that started. So it's a great time to get a board member. Uh, congratulations. Thanks for mentioning those things, Amy, but the robotics team also, um, did really well.
Oh, Terry, no, I think I, I need to ask her. Oh, no, that was questions. Do you have any board comments? Okay.
No, I'm fine.
Thanks for joining. Okay, upcoming meeting is March fifteenth, this meeting at the district office at midnight. March twentieth work session at the district office seven P M, date changed due to spring break. So that's back-to-back weeks of meetings. And then April tenth is a meeting at the district office at seven P M.
Doctor, best question. Could there, many technologies, would it make it easier for us to have school board meetings in other facilities? Or are we still so limited to this room?
I think there, I may, there've been times when the board has chosen to meet board work sessions in the various schools, um, and it's always a board racket. So I think technology could allow us to, to meet anywhere. And we'd still be able to produce the same access for folks at home. We'd still be able to provide it still.
This might be a little extra work to bring in from there and then.
Is it just the, really the meeting at all that we would need that you could connect that in anywhere? There's a high-speed internet connection.
We don't have the microphone.
Like, and that's, that's portable in and of itself, and knowing that side, yeah. That could be easily brought along without too much extra work. The way it's set up.
What are you thinking about?
I'm interested, I really enjoyed being able to go to the schools on our work sessions, to each school. They would have a little media, they would host something, learn something about the school, and I'm just figuring to do that. I know in the past with all the wires and stuff, we, we, we're sort of anchored here. But if we have the opportunity to go see a roll down a line or a line B S parts, I love gonna do that.
And just as long as we've got a high-speed internet connection, we can go anywhere.
Got any comments about that, Chris? He's recording. All right, well, we can definitely. Okay, shall we adjourn this meeting? Second of all, favor is right here.